City Commission Meeting for November 26th will come to order. Roll call, city clerk.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. Galt?
Present.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight, we have Andrew Halford here. He's the lay leader at Fountain Avenue Methodist Church. Welcome, Andrew, to do our invocation. And our pledge of allegiance tonight is John Holt Gru. He's a Paducah Tillman High School freshman.
Tillman pride.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this season of Thanksgiving. Something that we should celebrate every day of our lives. Giving thanks for how we are richly blessed as individuals, as a community, as a commonwealth, as a nation, as your world, oh God. Be with those who are on our hearts today, tonight. Be with those who don't have all of the comforts, all of the blessings of food and family and shelter that we have. Be with them. Guide them, uphold them as you guide and uphold us. Be especially with the city commission this evening as they make decisions that are important for the future of this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Andrew. City manager, do we have any additions or deletions?
We do have a deletion. The announcement that is printed on your agenda has been postponed.
Okay.
Commissioner Galt has the motion to go into executive session.
Do that now.
Yeah, if you're going to change the order of the meeting, she needs to read a motion.
I'd like to change the order of the meeting tonight. Commissioner Galt, I believe you have that.
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Okay. Who has?
I have.
I need to.
Roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
And?
I've got.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Number five, a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61-80, 1G.
Second. Is that the right one? Okay. Second.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We will not be taking action when we come back out. And I am.
Yes, we are.
Well, not on the executive session.
Oh, okay.
Portion of it.
Just want to make sure you know we are.
And I will not be heading up the meeting when we come out. I have to leave, so Commissioner Wilson is going to head the meeting up when we come back in. I'd just like, before we leave though, I would like to thank Les Evans and his crew for all the wonderful work they've done this week. They've really worked hard to get Paducah looking very sparkly and very, very much in the Christmas spirit. So, we all need to congratulate them on such a good job. Right? Commissioner Rhodes? Okay. 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 Well, the meeting will come back to order. Who has the motion to come back into full session?
Commissioner Abraham, just make a motion, please.
I make a motion that we come back into open session.
Second.
Should call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Abraham, you have the next motion?
Yes. I moved that the meeting, I moved that the reading of said minutes for November 12th and 19th, 2013, city commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Should call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, for the RNF documents on motions?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, agreements, contracts, administrative services and stop-loss agreement with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Purchase Area Development District, Inc., financial statements for a year ended June 30th, 2013, Purchase District Health Department financial statements for a year ended June 30th, 2013, Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency financial statements for years ended June 30th, 2013, and 2012, McCracken County Health Taxing District financial statements for the years ending June 30th, 2013, and 2012, Secretary of State Certificate of Dissolution for Oak Grove Cemetery Preservation and Restoration Association, Inc., General Obligation Bond Series 2013 A and B in the amount of $1,120,000 renovation and improvement of municipal pool and $2,475,000 Maco organics and teletext services. Bids, engineering, public works department, bids for police vehicles for the Paducah Police Department, Linwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC, Paducah Ford Lincoln Mazda, Inc., and Freedom Dodge.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Next, we go into appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Kelly Sanders-Dai as a member of the Tree Advisory Board to replace Kathy Kenny, whose term has expired. The term for Ms. Sanders-Dai will expire July 26, 2017.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Has that motion?
I had that motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson in appointing Kelly Sanders-Dai as a member of the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Whereas I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Matthew Schultz to replace Shavine Duncan-Herring, who has resigned, as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. This term will expire July 24th, 2014. And whereas I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Gary Reese to replace Mark Rowe, who has resigned as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. This term will expire November 26, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of?
You want to say Mayor Kayler?
Mayor Kayler in appointing Matthew Schultz and Gary Reese as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Just want to give you props there. That's all.
All right. Next, we'll move into municipal orders and personnel actions with Commissioner Galt.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Need a second.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. We have personnel actions for your approval. We recommend a couple of right-of-way maintenance personnel to start next week. Any questions?
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Want to call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Next, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay. I move a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Application and All Documents Necessary Through the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency for a Matching Grant in the Amount of $250,000 for the Paducah Fire Department's 2013-2014 Assistance for Firefighters Grants Program" be adopted.
Second.
Chief Kyle?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. We, this is our annual grant that we typically apply for through the Assistance to Firefighters program. What we're applying for tonight are self-contained breathing apparatus and extrication tools. These are frontline equipment items. Ours have age on them, as well as we are several iterations behind on technology with both, such as the new extrication tool, or the extrication tools we have will not cut boron, which is a key metal in most new cars now. Makes it very difficult to extricate people from them if we don't, if we don't have that ability. So, these are frontline items that we're applying for, the match. We have some of the match in the grant this year. I anticipate purchase and/or award probably after the next fiscal year where we can program additional matching funds. Maybe some left over, I have to come back and ask for you too, but you can see we're talking about $25,000 in local cash match.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You know, just amazing when you go to Google and, so I typed in 20, let's see, what is it, 2216 versus 4500 and came up with, I'd never seen firehouse.com, but it's an interesting online discussion board, means professional fire people.
Yep.
And of course, I mean, it was just, it was a nice discussion. I didn't read pages. I read, I stopped after a page of discussion about the relative merits of 2216 versus 4500 PSI scuba tanks. And, you know, they were, I mean, there were some that said, yeah, go get them, and some said, no, I don't think so. It was just kind of an interesting discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Everything from, it'll require a different kind of bracketry. They don't really hold anymore. What about when you're, you know, if you have a mutual aid program and you've got different tanks and your other mutual aid partners and, you know.
Well, most air packs, what, a lot of the manufacturers won't tell you, they don't like to tell you, is that you can use other manufacturers' bottles. They don't come around and say that, but in a mutual aid circumstances, you can do that. And packs that have higher rated PSI count can use lower rated bottles. So, if you have a 4500 pack, you can use a 2216 bottle. What you can't do is put a 4500 bottle on a 2216 pack. System won't operate that way.
Will we, will this require us buying a different kind of charging station for these things?
They don't have charging stations. It is a pack and bottle that is a set. That's what we're proposing to buy in this instance, and bottles to go with it. The bottles we current, what's driving us this direction is the bottles we have are coming to end of life. They're staged out, but we received a grant for bottles in '05, an additional set of bottles that are coming to end of life down the road here in the next year or two. As well as the packs that we have, we upgraded in 2005 as a result of a grant, and they became compliant to the 2002 standard.
Okay.
Where several standards since that time, we're losing out on some technology, as well as the packs that we have are becoming more maintenance-heavy as a result of their age. So, we're starting the process of natural replacement. These are capital improved, capital items for the department. And, and I've talked to the city manager, as well as finance director, about a fleet-type replacement program for these types of things. They're very costly. They're $6,500 to $7,000 a peach for the pack. Extrication tools run about $25,000 a set. So, they're, you know, they're major items, major end items for us, and we use them heavily in the course of our duties.
Sure. Okay.
Chief, talk about, a little bit about as vehicles become more, folks make the choice to, to purchase vehicles more fuel-efficient. A lot of times, those are electric cars.
Mm-hmm.
And where we sit logistically on the interstate, you know, our guys are going out, someone's trapped in a car, and you, and you, you got to saw out. Talk a little bit about that.
You can't just cut on a car anywhere anymore. We, we've gone as far as, you know, a lot of guys have, there's an app on your iPhone that tells you where to cut electric cars or hybrid cars. There's programs out there that, that we could purchase. We do, we spend a lot of time training for that because you can't know all the different types of cars out there. You've got the electric cars and hybrid cars. You've got the, you've got the cars with boron now. There's now three generations of different types of boron. They've, in other words, they've, they've built extrication tools for the first generation of it that won't cut the third generation. So, there's, there's all these types of things going on out there that we're constantly trying to stay ahead of. And, you know, there's workarounds for a lot of that stuff, but, you know, you have to, it, sometimes you have to peel the car apart to try to find out where to cut, so to speak. Get the skin off of it where you can see what's behind it. You've got airbags all over the cars now. You've got electric cabling running through cars now that, in places where you didn't used to have to worry about that.
And the whole time, the clock's ticking.
And the whole time, the golden hour is ticking away.
Right. Well, of course, we, we just, in one of your, one of the seminars, there was a seminar held here, even, that you all put on to the inspection department about electric, hybrid.
Right. That is, you know, that's exactly right. We, we held a seminar this year specific to electric cars, and, you know, we didn't even touch on what the cars are built out of these days in terms of boron and other types of metal, but that was just one element of that process that we have to be concerned with on a daily basis.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Want to call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving the Sale of Real Property Located at 902 South Fifth Street," or, and in consideration of $5 to Sainer Properties LLC be adopted.
Second. All right. Steve?
Surplus property, this will be in addition to Beltline Electric, where they're proposing to make improvements for a parking lot. So, in some senses, it's a win-win situation. The city will have the liability of maintenance of the property, and some business within the community will be able to utilize it.
It was put up for bid?
Yes.
By bucks.
We only got one bid.
Hey, but it goes onto the tax rolls.
Pretty good.
For a higher rate. And it's kind of a demolisher. I mean, it's, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay. You want to call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into ordinance adoption. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah Accepting a 2013 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant Award for the Paducah Police Department and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement and All Documents Relating There Too with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security." This office, this ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $32,000 through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for a 2013 reimbursable grant award to purchase up to 10 handheld radios to be used by the Paducah Police Department. This award does not require a local match or in-kind contribution. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security.
Second.
Okay. These have been discussed before. Is there any other discussion?
I'm, I just said, is Homeland Security ever going to run out of money? They just, it's amazing.
They're handing out less than they used to, but I think they're going to be around for a while.
They keep shoveling this way.
We're grateful.
The effects of that, I mean, show through in times of disaster such as a week ago Sunday when we find that law enforcement agencies between themselves are perhaps better coordinated because they're doing more cross-training and training together, and the communications are better for the most part, so.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Do you have another one, Commissioner Galt, or the amending zoning ordinance, or does that all go to?
I think it's Commissioner Rhodes. Do you have one next?
I have the next one.
Individuals?
All right.
This is, I have section, I have number one.
On the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Since I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 126-71 Off-Street Parking and Loading Areas of Chapter 126, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance is amending Section 126-71 Off-Street Parking and Loading Areas of Chapter 126, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, clarifying parking requirements for hotels, motels, and quick-style restaurants. Federal ADA guidelines relating to handicapped parking are also addressed.
Second.
These also have been discussed before? Any other thing else? City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 126-76 Sign Regulations of Chapter 126, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that Section 126-76D regulations for temporary sign is amended to strike out references to ordinance that no longer exists. Section 126-76G, signs authorized for R1, R2, R3, NSZ, and R4 zones is amended to allow places of worship to have electronic message signs, provided certain conditions are met.
Second. Anything else? Okay. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 106, Convenience and Service Zone B1 of Chapter 126, Zoning the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that Section 106, Convenience and Service Zone B1 of Chapter 126, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances, removes variety stores and shoe stores as principally permitted uses, and removes service stations as a conditionally permitted use. It adds automobile rental, sales, or service establishments as a conditional use.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Change Order Number One with Midstate Construction for the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Two Project." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute Change Order Number One in the amount of $22,968.72 to pay for removal and rebuild of an exterior wall at the concession stand, removal of an extra concrete slab, and additional plumbing work for completion of the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Two project, therefore increasing the total contract price to $162,575.72.
Second. Mark?
We have actually found that we had, this is truly an amended change order. We approved a change order back in July for $15,000 plus four, and it was actually misstated in that, that it was for the removal of the asbestos. That was not true. It was, that was for removal of the wall that we had, and so that was included with that. Then we had the additional change order of some additional concrete removal and the plumbing work that was needed to be done, plus the masonry work. That adds up to the $22,000, so we're actually amending that. The asbestos was taken out by separate contract, and that was a total of $4,000 with a separate contractor.
Where was this concrete? Was it, was taken out in front?
This was the wall that was taken out in the concession stand area.
But did it just show, I mean, was it not known before?
No, not when we were removing that asbestos tank. We, we had a choice of taking out the asbestos tank and sawing it up and cutting it up, but the asbestos was friable and could have gotten airborne and would have cost more than taking the wall down and, and doing this. So, this was not foreseen. So, they took it out as a whole package. We knocked, we took the wall out.
So, where are we on the, I mean?
On the, this, this is our conclusion on the concession stand portion of the bill.
What is left? Are we pretty much finished?
We have some, we're in negotiation with the main pool contractor still.
Okay.
Over some of their finish. But that's the rest of it.
Are we pretty much finished?
Yes. The pool itself is done. So, yes.
And the spray part?
And spray part.
And now the concession stand?
Now it's concession stand. So, we're, our negotiations are going for final payments with the main contractor. The rest of it, we're, we're pretty well set as far, the spray pad, we're good with that contractor. Mark Coe's out.
All the work's done.
All the work is done.
So, you expect the contractor will try to get something done before the end of the year, so that?
As far as negotiation, I don't know. Don't know that yet, just yet. But we'll see.
I would have.
We're trying. We're trying to work through that, so. But this, this final, this is the final thing we have to do with contract with midstates.
Right.
Trying to take care of the local contractors. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 2012-67929, and Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Revised Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2012 through July 30, 2013 by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah repeals ordinance number 2012-67929 that estimated revenues and resources This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah repeals ordinance number two zero one two dash six seven nine two nine that estimated revenues and resources and appropriated funds for fiscal year two thousand and eleven and adopts a revised budget for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen that reflects all adjustments made throughout the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent financial auditors. The appropriations of city government for a total of sixty-four million eight hundred six thousand dollars and eight hundred six and thirty-five dollars and summarized by fund as follows. General, thirty-two million four hundred seventy-eight, six hundred twenty. Small grants, forty-six thousand four hundred seventy-five. MAP, one million five hundred thirty-six, seven fifteen. Investment, four million six eighty-seven, seven eighty. CDBG, four hundred seventy-two thousand, seven ninety. Home, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, six ten. Telecom, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred. E-nine-one-one, one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven thirty-five. Court awards, fifty thousand, two eighty-five. Debt, two million nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, one thirty-five. CIP, six million, three seventy-three, zero ten. Bond, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight ten. Solid waste, four million, five five five, three forty-five. Civic center, seventy-eight thousand, two fifty. Rental, four hundred, three thousand, two hundred and ten. Radio depreciation, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. Fleet, five hundred twenty-one thousand, one forty. Fleet trust, eight hundred six, nine, nine sixty-five. Self-insurance, nine hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty. Health insurance, four million, two hundred sixteen, eight eighty-five. PRA, forty thousand, six seventy. AF, AEPF, PF, PF, TRSTS, one million, seven hundred, one million, seven five eight, four eighty. For a total of sixty-four million, eight hundred six thousand and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Good job.
All right.
Yeah, it's just a lot of numbers. My eyes are going to cross. The manager, do you have any comments on it? Jeff's done.
Well, it, obviously there's a lot of detail behind, uh, the adjustments, but in a word, it adjusts actual expenditures, um, to adjust the budget to actual expenditures. And, uh, I can't speak in great detail, John will be here next meeting, but there were probably some, um, minor impacts on cash. But, uh, if there were anything major, I think that would have been pointed out in your, in your memo.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Linwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents for sale to the City of four police intercepted pursuit vehicles for use by the Paducah Police Department, authorizing the possible addition, purchase of up to two additional police vehicles prior to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. And authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for sale. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts a bid of Linwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one, uh, dollars and sixty cents for four twenty-fourteen Dodge Charger police vehicles for the use by the police, uh, Paducah Police Department. And approves the purchase of up to two additional police vehicles at a unit price of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents for the use by the Paducah Police Department in the event the city may need to purchase additional vehicles prior to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Linwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC for the purchase of the police vehicles.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, uh, commission, you may not recall this, but we had originally planned to buy three, uh, police, uh, patrol cars this year. However, with the events of one of our officers being, uh, involved in a, in an accident, it actually totaled out the vehicle that he was in. So that, that vehicle needed to be replaced. Uh, that being the case, uh, that's why you, you're seeing four instead of three this year because we had one taken out right in the middle of the bid process. Uh, also that raised our eyebrows, myself and, uh, Chief Barnhill, that, uh, maybe we need to be prepared for that because with, with the police twenty-four, seven on the street, they could have a car that'd be taken out at any time, uh, by an accident. So we thought ahead a little bit there and, uh, put that provision in that bid so that in the event another accident might occur where we lose a vehicle, we have the option to buy one instantaneously to replace that with this local dealer. So, uh, that's just something we, we put in place for that.
Chief, you have anything?
I don't have anything to add tonight.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm glad it was local.
Yeah.
Bruce, we can, we can compete with these state contract award winner.
I do.
We could, because it's all the same price.
No, it's, I, I get that. I, my quick question is, how many, um, of this style car do we have?
Uh, we currently already have five of the Dodge Chargers.
Okay. So we'll have four more? Okay.
Guys like those?
Yeah.
You know, there was Mopar guys and Chevy guys and Ford guys.
Want to be a police officer so I can drive slick cars at high speed.
So does it have a Hemi?
Oh.
There you go.
V-six. V-six.
Gas-efficient.
Put a Hemi deca on the back of, no way I know the difference.
Rick, you may want to stay up here. I skipped one, uh, Commissioner Rhodes? You would go back to that one?
So, let's see. We'll go to mine about the motor.
Right.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay for the emergency repair of an electric motor servicing pump number five located at floodwall station number two, fourteen sixteen North Sixth Street. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the finance director is hereby authorized to pay industrial maintenance and engineering corporation in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars for an emergency repair of the electric motor serving pump number five located at floodwall station number two, fourteen sixteen North Sixth Street.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Mayor Pro Tim and, uh, commission, um, this is going to be a series, um, of events that we're probably going to encounter over the next several years, uh, until we actually get our pump stations rebuilt. Uh, the Corps of Engineers is currently working on a design to, uh, on the backside of our feasibility study of getting our, our floodwall reconstructed. And, uh, while that is going on, we're having components fail. Uh, this particular motor, five hundred horsepower pump failed on June the nineteenth, but we had high water on us until, uh, late July. Uh, these things can't be worked on, uh, while you have high water. You've got to get the water off of you. Uh, in this particular pump, uh, we took quotes, uh, we had a quote of seventy-four thousand dollars to fix this motor versus thirty-eight thousand dollars to fix this motor. Typically, at this time of the year, you would have high water on you. We would be using that pump, uh, at the end of July. You don't know how that's going to come. There is a provision in your procurement, uh, policy, in your administrative section of your ordinances that allows you to do these emergency repairs. Uh, we did what we could with getting quotes, uh, and this company out of Nashville is capable of fixing big motors. Uh, we actually went down and, uh, observed our motor taken apart and seen what the failure was in that. And that motor is back online, ready to serve Paducah again.
Thank you. Another discussion?
Isn't that amazing, the variance in, you said from seventy-some odd thousand?
Seventy-four thousand to thirty-eight thousand, it's the same motor. A new motor that size, a new motor that size has been priced at three hundred thousand. It's a, it's a five hundred horsepower low RPM pump, which is a, a custom-built pump, uh, motor to turn the pump. It's not the most efficient in the world, but it has longevity, it's sixty-five years old.
Hey, rock on.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Mr. Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter six alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah hereby amends section six dash four operating hours of retail premises of chapter six alcohol, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to allow alcohol sales during the hours the polls are open for a primary, regular, school, or special election.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Thank you. Next we'll go with the city manager report.
Thank you. It's been traditional, uh, on the first Tuesday in December for the city commission and department directors to head up the can collection effort at Noble Park. So next Tuesday night, rather than having, uh, a meeting, we will be assembling at Noble Park and the, at the, uh, five-thirty? At the, uh, collection point. I think everybody knows where that is, so, um, come one, come all.
And I believe that we're, that will kick off Friday night officially. Noble Park will be open Friday night. Right, okay.
So with, uh, with Thanksgiving late this year, it seems like a quick transition. But nonetheless, after Thursday, we'll be into Christmas season. Uh, next week, week after this, uh, Chiefs, uh, Barnhill and Kyle and I will be traveling to take a look at a couple combined police and fire headquarters facility that a consultant that is under con serious, serious consideration for a recommendation for conceptual design, uh, has out there. Uh, importantly, not only will we be touring the two facilities, but we will be meeting with many of the key people that were involved in the entire process, uh, involving, uh, not just construction, but site selection and, and, and those sort of things that are critical to, to an issue as large as constructing a, a joint, uh, facility for two city departments. So we look forward to that and the information that we'll gain from it. Um, next, uh, excuse me, on the, uh, tenth, two weeks from tonight, I will be presenting my, um, reorganization proposal to the city commission for the Department of Main Street. Uh, along with that, that night, uh, there will be some, uh, items on the agenda for, uh, some changes in positions that are part of that recommendation. Also that day, December tenth, uh, will, at one o'clock, will be the, uh, ribbon cutting and associated activities, uh, at the boat launch. So we look forward to good weather that day and maybe the river coming up a little bit, although that's probably not going to happen. Um, but, uh, uh, we look forward to, um, to that and the celebration of what has been a very good project, uh, smooth project and, and an important project to the, um, short-term and long-term effort to further develop the, the riverfront in Paducah and increase the ability for our public and visitors to, um, interact between the water and, and the land both. So it's a very good project. We look forward to that day. And Mr. Thompson has an announcement to make.
Reminder that Saturday, the seventh, is the, uh, parade, the Christmas parade for this year and that it will kick off at five o'clock and we hope that you all will all be in, ready for to ride the carriages. At, we, and I anticipate the temperature to be above freezing.
Well, I, I, I will be there unless.
Uh, well, actually Tillman will play on Friday this year.
Really?
Win, yes.
Okay.
They will, they will play, Tillman will play Friday at three o'clock.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'll be there and then we can bring the.
Not an issue.
We can bring the kids back and they can march in the parade.
That's it. That's it.
Mark, as long as you're up there, why don't you do a little horn-tooting while you're up there, okay? But, uh, your conference and what you came back with?
Oh, thank you very much. I, I almost forgot about that. We, uh, the Paducah Park Services, uh, was the award winner for outstanding department and class one department, which is large cities in, in Kentucky. So we were the, voted outstanding department for, by the Kentucky Recreation Park Society. And we had the, uh, top, uh, program of the year, which is our touch truck program. So those were two award winners. We brought back plaques for you for that. And, uh, it's all tribute to your park staff that you've got there. We've got some great folks on staff.
Great.
Congratulations, y'all did a great job, everything you do. Looking forward to Noble Park and the parade. Thank you. Any commissioner comments?
Uh, just that the, uh, the notes that, uh, we received in our, uh, memos of how our, our guys aided Brookport, uh, was, you know, that's a small, uh, municipal staff over there and something that happened so catastrophic over there, no doubt they were going to be overwhelmed. And, uh, you know, our guys, uh, stepped up and, and helped out as well as some other, um, uh, surrounding counties. Uh, and that's what it's all about when you, something like that happens, you, you go and you help and, uh, uh, you know, our guys are, are, are all about, uh, professionalism and, and helping out our neighbors and that showed. And that was, that was just guys, uh, police chief, uh, and fire chief, great job, great leadership. You guys were on the ground over there, so, uh, good job.
Glad you guys are in the audience to hear that tonight, Chief, Barnhill and Kyle. We appreciate you all. Anything else? Okay, see you at Noble Park Friday afternoon, Friday evening? Um, anything else? There are no public comments. I haven't seen anyone here and we have no paper from them, so, okay. Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Okay.